Okay, we are at 4:40 in your worship if you wish to begin.
Okay, welcome to the regular meeting of council electronically via Zoom Tuesday, April the 6th, 2021. Meeting called to order, we'll have a moment of silence. Motion for approval of the agenda.
Moved by Casey Owen, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. See it resolved that the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on April 6th, 2021, beginning at 4:40 PM, be approved and circulated to all members of council.
All in favor? Motion carried. Any declaration of paternity interest? None noted. Petitions and delegations, welcome Alada Clarkson on the timber harvest petition. Alada, could you turn on your video on mic, please?
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You wish to speak on behalf of that petition, Alada?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm supposed to go now. All right, well, thank you for having me, first of all. I'd like to begin by clarifying that I do not represent all of Swastika or speak on behalf of everyone. However, I am here to show just how many of us are outraged at the proposal for the timber harvest. With over 1,500 signatures between the online and the physical petition and the protest going on outside of Town Hall right now, I hope I can magnify the public opinion on this matter. I decided to take this on when I realized I was only hearing rumors about the proposal and many falsehoods being spread around. My husband and I read the proposal in its entirety and the LMA, all 280 pages of it, trying to fully understand what was being proposed. Once understood, I went door to door to bring awareness to it. My position was to leave the municipal land alone and seeing the immense support against it, I realized that Swastika as a whole does not want this to happen. Of course, everyone has different reasons and personal opinions as to why they don't want this to happen, but it is clear we collectively are against it. Firstly, I'd like to mention the insinuation of a fire break being one of the reasons for the harvest. With a few simple phone calls that I've made, I reached a fire compliance and prevention specialist with the M&amp;R. I was advised that a fire break is typically used during an active fire if it is decided that it is required to protect a town or entity from said fire. Not all fires are low burning and some dance on top of the trees and a simple fire break would not suffice as protection. I was also advised that typically fire barriers are used to protect the forest from an entity, not the other way around. And these fire barriers around assets are maintained and kept clear cut. It's my understanding that the town intends to replant, so I struggle to understand why this option was advertised. Another reason for the given to the public was budworms or the potential that a budworm infestation could happen. Although the fear surrounding an infestation of budworm is a valid concern, the forest north of Swastika has not been infected. Budworms, budworm outbreaks usually occur every 30 to 40 years. They are destructive and they have the ability to destroy numerous acres of land, but we are not actively battling an infestation at this time. Another reason that was put forward to the public is that the forest is older and starting to die. Yes, there are some trees that are dead, but these offer ecosystems that feed and offer shelter to many species. I hate to sound sort of redundant here, but death and rot is a natural process and there is a circle of life that needs to be acknowledged and appreciated. The forested areas in question are full of biodiversity and iconic Canadian species. These animals would not be here if the forest did not supply them with a healthy and abundant environment to thrive. In the LMA, it states that the council should consider all options, not just monetary values of the asset. I understand that this was an unsolicited proposal from logging companies, so the decision to explore other avenues before considering this harvest seems like a logical option. I suggest looking into federal grants for conservation and preservation as a viable way to protect nature and receive funds to put towards the new LMA and the town. Larger corporations such as TD Canada Trust offer tree planting grants and environmental sustainability grants. A simple Google search gave me many options that the municipality should explore and utilize. My hope is that these other avenues for revenue are properly researched and considered before moving forward in any fashion. Until recently, Swastika benefited from a relatively private and unknown trail system. It does bring sadness to have to shed light to these areas and potentially lose the privacy we currently have. However, it is municipal property and should be used to benefit all taxpayers. I did highlight the benefits of keeping the natural areas in my submission to council last week. And you know, with the continued COVID isolation requirements being extended, I really think that this holds some weight. My personal proposal to the town is to maintain the land as municipality owned and allow a volunteer group to maintain and rebuild the trail system so we can preserve our biodiversity and nature. I have many residents of Swastika on board already offering me money and manpower to help make this a reality. I personally GPS the maps that I submitted to you that are actively being maintained by the residents of Swastika. I hope you've all had a chance to look at that. I was told that, you know, you can't protect something that you don't know is there, so I made sure that those maps were available to you. I believe that these forested areas hold so much more value than a simple harvest. The town of Kirkland Lake needs to aggressively pursue environmental stewardship, especially with climate change being a very large aspect of our new reality. We may not be able to change the world, but we can change our little corner of it and maintain the beauty and nature that has brought so many of us to the north. We are asking everybody as a community with the petition to keep the municipal lands as is in a protected area for the constituents to continue using and enjoying for many years to come. And I hope that's okay.
Okay, we're open for questions or comments from council members. Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I just want to congratulate Ms. Clarkson for her community involvement, for her research, for her knowledge. And I know I was approached mostly by people that lived in Swastika, but some other places too. And while I was aware that that was used as a recreation area, I had no idea the amount of people that use that area for recreation. But my mind is made up and that'll come up later. But again, I just want to congratulate you and let you know that council appreciates residents like you who do get involved, who do have the courage to come forward and say where they stand on a certain issue. And we do listen, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Alada, I've walked that area a few times and gone in there on four wheelers. And it is a pretty pristine area with the two lakes back there as well. It's a hidden gem that I don't think a lot of people in Kirkland Lake actually realize that we have. And I'd hate to lose that. I can understand your concern. And I think it does get quite a bit of use, more so than people realize. And it's not just Swastika residents, it's people from Kirkland Lake proper, so.
Yeah, exactly. We, you know, we use those trails on a regular basis. We bump into friends and, you know, colleagues and neighbors and things like that on a regular basis. There are some trails there that really haven't, like have been grown over. There's lots of opportunity to really extend those trails and really, you know, kind of have, I guess, you know, Kirkland Lake snowshoe trails and hiking trails and just have an extension of that. It is quite extensive there. You could hike all the way over to Perron River as well. I just didn't have the time to get all the way over there to show that the trail does continue going all the way over to Perron Creek as well. But really, you know, it would be heartbreaking to see this land become nothing but a log pit.
Agree. My concern when I recently drove out towards Dobie and to see where a clear cut was done, and it's pretty gruesome looking. And I'd hate to see that happen out in Swastika.
Yeah, and you know what? Another thing that I didn't really talk about is barriers. Everyone keeps saying, well, we would be able to give you a barrier. You know, once trees that are sort of grown up in a, what's the word I'm looking for? In an area that doesn't have access to winds, I suppose. And if you expose those trees to winds, you're risking, like you're running the risk of having those trees fall down and really eliminate the sort of aesthetics benefit of a barrier to begin with.
Can I ask, did you have the opportunity of reading the report that was on the agenda on, it's on our website?
I have read it. I haven't had a chance to go through every single page of it, unfortunately. But I have read it. I do understand that Mr. Haas is going ahead with TK 10 being taken or suggesting it be taken off of the proposal. But in the proposal that I did submit to the town, I explained that the snowmobile trail is in TK 10 and the large majority of the trails that we use in the winter months to stay off of that trail out of respect for the snowmobilers are in, you know, TK 5 and 6.
The other comments from council members? Would you like to stay on Zoom to listen to Mr. Haas's report to council?
I would, I would be grateful for that. Thank you.
You may not be able to speak.
That's okay. I've done enough speaking.
Again, as Counselor Owen said, thank you for the opportunity of you stepping up to the plate and defending the forest out there. We appreciate that. And it's not easy coming to council. Not everybody will do it, so.
I learned that the hard way. I tried to get other people to do it, but no one else would do it. So I thought, oh, great, it's me, I'm stuck doing it. But thank you very much. I appreciate that.
You did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Rick Owen. See it resolved that the petition and delegation from Alada Clarkson be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. Acceptance, item number five, acceptance of minutes and recommendations.
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Casey Owen. See it resolved that council approve the minutes of the following meeting, minutes of the regular meeting of council held March 23rd, 2021.
All in favor? Motion carried. Reports of municipal officers and communications, item 6.1, proposed timber harvesting Kirkland Lake landfill and Swastika North. Mr. Will Haas, Director of Economic Development. Welcome, welcome.
Thank you. Through you, your worship to council. As you have stated earlier, this is a follow-up on the same, on the petition that was just presented. Obviously, we don't make comments on the petition and council or staff is asked to look at all options. That is what we'll be doing with this report. Recognize that there is a lot of information to digest and recognize that council may wish to defer any decisions on the subject to the future. Certainly respect that. Certainly, there is a lot of stuff that does need time to consider and to come to a conclusion. However, on the chance that council does have an interest in harvesting at all, now or in the future, staff have put forward a series of recommendations for council's consideration. Essentially, these recommendations are of three categories. Where to harvest, where not to harvest, and recommendations to guide any harvesting activity should that proceed. The report begins with an overview of the land manager, landowner's management agreement, which is basically a document that guides the town in the management of its forest resources. The LMA recognizes that the value of forest resources can be assessed in different ways. It could be monetary, recreational, social, environmental. The values overlap, none take precedence, they are not mutually exclusive. As pertains to harvesting, the LMA does serve as a forest management plan insofar as it defines the forest and sets out the rules of engagement should any harvesting be initiated. That came from our past experiences where the town had been approached on an ad hoc basis. I want to cut here, I want to cut there. What were the rules? What were you trying to achieve? How does it fit with everything else? That was the genesis of the land management agreement. The, as noted in the report, staff did receive two unsolicited expressions of interest in harvesting the identified areas. We brought this forward to council's attention and as per council's direction, we held a public consultation process. In general, this is what we heard. Concern about the viewscape from the Blanche River. Concern about impact on water quality at the Blanche River. Concern about truck traffic through Swastika. Concern about impact on recreational enjoyment of the area around Swastika. Concern about reforestation and questioning of selling the land instead of harvesting the forest. Based on the consultation process, the staff put forward the following recommendations for council's consideration. General recommendations. The LMA, I'm going to sound like an administrator here, but I do have to address this point. The LMA runs from 2012 to 2022. One suggestion would be if you do do harvesting, update the LMA, put part of the revenues towards that. Also, if you do want to do some of the other recommendations that were in the report, I'm thinking specifically about assessing land for sale. Perhaps use some of the revenues that you would realize towards that as well. Second general recommendation. Remove from any current consideration the mining claims alongside the Blanche River on the north side and explore the feasibility of selling those lots for seasonal use. This is something, as I pointed out in the report, we did look at in 2014. But I think that it warns being revisited with a fresh pair of eyes to see how those, how we could leverage the land base that we do have in other ways, particularly on lakefront or waterfront properties, but also other ones. There is a demand and it's Northern Ontario, you see this everywhere, so how can Kirkland Lake develop that more? As I said, one of the categories of the recommendations is where to cut. Suggesting that the KL landfill block could be cut. TKL 4, 5, and 6, with the exception of the mining claims abutting the north shore of the Blanche River and implementing extended reserve from L 4266 to increase the distance from the harvest area to Swastika and with modified operation rules. Excuse me if I don't go through reading everything in the report itself, but I'm sure you have that in front of you. The other recommendation, where not to cut. Block 10, north and east of Swastika. Explore the feasibility of designating it a conservation or recreation area. Block 10 claims north of Highway 11. Explore the feasibility of repositioning these for commercial or residential purpose. We don't have highway commercial property readily available. That is an area that perhaps we could look at that. Recommendations for guiding harvesting activity should it occur now or in the future. Do not allow any access to harvest blocks via Swastika. Okay, not from anything that we would do would any of the vehicles go in that direction. Ensure that whoever takes a contract has a duty to advise residents when they are going to be affected by hauling. Have that conversation with them, no surprises. Update all the area of concern prescriptions to those using the 2021 Tomisking Forest Management Plan. Areas of concern could be anything from distance from a water body to wildlife habitat. These are identified, they're mapped out, and then prescriptions are put forth where how far away you have to stay or how you treat such a thing. Our prescriptions reflect the forest management plan guidance that we had in 2009, 2009 to 2012. The 2021 Tomisking Forest Management Plan obviously has the newer ones. Follow those until such a time, at least until the LMA is updated. Maintain reforestation performance bond. That has been a point of contention by some of the companies, especially the smaller ones. They say they can't get a bond. Well, we still need to protect the public interest in ensuring that the forest is replanted. So despite the uncomfortableness of it, I suggest that we maintain a performance bond. Ensure that it does match the anticipated cost of reforestation in a specific area and we publish replanting timelines. That is a point of contention frequently because people will say, oh, it was cut. How come it hasn't been harvested or replanted right away? Because that's not the way it would happen in nature either. You would let the slash settle, decompose a bit, and then at the appropriate time, you put the seedlings in. It's a difference between having a replanted forest that looks good right away and one that is actually sustainable and lasting for a long return. But we need to do a better job of, one, making sure that it's there and it's done properly and that's communicated. Commission of viewscape analysis to determine appropriate setback from the Blanche River. One of the common comments that we received was, well, right now, when I paddle down the Blanche River, I have a pristine environment that I can see. Well, how do we preserve that? Now, that one, you know, if you're going to turn those lots, those properties into seasonal or whatever residential lots, well, a viewscape isn't necessary. But I would suggest that we do that and have that as a reference point. If, if in the future, the town does wish to harvest, this is one of the, I would say, parameters that we're seeking to preserve. Preserve the L 104 trail as per the LMA and the Tomisking Forest Management Plan guidelines. That's an agreement we have with the snowmobile club that is a recognized or documented trail. It's one that we are obligated to protect. I sound like an ogre when I don't make any comments about the informal trails. And I'm only not making a comment because I can't really. When you go out on the land base, trails are everywhere. And they're all valuable to somebody. I can't either, I can't disparage and I can't encourage the value somebody else puts on a trail. All I can really refer to at this point is how do we treat them according to the documentation that guides council. In conclusion, I will say that the recommendation to proceed to harvest in TKL 4, 5, and 6 is one that, how do I say it? Like I said at the beginning, staff are obligated to bring forward all viewpoints, all considerations, all alternatives. I appreciate the idea that harvesting at all is upsetting to some. But I still have to bring it forth because it is still a viable option that deserves consideration, even if it's yes or no, doesn't matter, it's still a viable option. If employed, yes, it can benefit the land in terms of reducing the risk of infestations and fire. There will be revenue associated with a cut. But until one knows if they will cut, where they will cut, and what the rules governing the cut are, you cannot put a meaningful number to that. It would be a lie to tell you this. It would be a lie to say to the public, oh, it's worth $200,000. And then maybe it's worth more, maybe it's worth much less. Don't go down that route. If council defines what it wants to do, then we can release an RFP based on that. And from that, we will get fairly accurate numbers of, you know, what it is valued at. An RFP goes out and you get your proposals back, you are not obligated to accept any of them. Right? But at least you have a valuation there, something to start with. I think I'd rather just stop at that point than take any questions. It's probably easier at this point.
Elsewhere, White?
Sorry, it took so long. Will, you just went over and above as always with this. Just the information is just incredible. Thank you so much for that. You know that I love the information. I just wanted to say, not only did Ms. Clarkson just go over and above spearheading what she did, there was 35 pages of comments from different individuals included. That is the most engagement that I've seen in the last couple of years. So thank you to all the residents that took part. During the open meeting, it was said, I believe, that Kirkland Lake is only one of a handful municipalities that have this sort of agreement. So what, I just want to know from your standpoint, why do you see it as a high priority for KL to invest to update this agreement?
Thank you for your comments. Essentially, we talk within the municipal field of asset management. Okay? Your forest, your land base is a huge asset. We are a very large land owner. It's very easy to just look the other way. Let whatever happens, happen. But that's when you do get things happening that will affect future generations, will affect the environment, will mean a missed opportunity for the municipality, be it as a dollar, be it as a recreation area, whichever. I think it's critically important that you have a clear understanding of what this asset is, that you have a clear understanding of how you value that asset. I keep coming back to that word, but it's important because you can look at a area, an area, and as Ms. Clarkson points out, like that, that's a fantastic spot where we, that's where we have our recreation. That's a focus point of it. You can also look at it and say, okay, you know what? There's potentially a mine over there. If that comes forward, what are we going to do? How are we going to do it? The LMA is essentially a code of conduct for council. It shows the public that council is aware of what it has stewardship for and has some hard and fast rules as to how it's going to manage it. It's a pain to do this from a municipal perspective because frankly, you guys keep changing every four years and your perspective change. So we're trying to, running to keep up with you. But as elected officials, and I think that this exercise really demonstrates that. You know, you really want to know and want people to understand, we're not just going off and doing things ad hoc. This is, an offer has come forward, let's assess it, let's see what people say. Okay, if it's going to go forward, these are the rules that we expect and we will enforce them. That gives us, as Ms. Clarkson mentioned, environmental stewardship, that is environmental stewardship. It's management of your asset. I think it is very important.
Thank you.
Counselor Owens?
Yeah, Will, earlier you just mentioned that Kirkland Lake's a um big land owner. Do we have other claims in uh Bernhard and Morris said that that have potential? And you might have put this in the report. I might have missed it. But there is there other revenue generating potential somewhere in Bernhard and Morris said that are further away from built up areas?
There.
That we own?
Yeah, we have we have ownership um throughout primarily through tech. Uh Bernhard Morris said, uh LaBelle. There's a few. One of the thing, one of the reasons we did the LMA was that we had a lot of people coming forward in the early two thousands saying, oh, you guys own so much wood. You're 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 stupid. You're sitting there in poverty and yet, you know, look at all the stuff that you have. And one of the reasons we did the LMA was to actually quantify that. You have a lot of land. Doesn't mean you have a lot of wood. Some of it is pretty crappy. For lack of any other way of saying it, I walked one area and I disappeared into an old landfill. So that that's out there too. In terms of, you know, do you just go pick and choose? Okay, let's go cut this area. In order to get a good price, if that, you know, if it's it's for the money, you really want to make sure too that your stars align with that of industry. So if someone's planning to go and cut in an area, they'll search and find the other landowners and approach them and say, would you be interested? And that gives you your good price. But if you're going to say, well, okay, you know, we need ten thousand dollars, go cut that spot over there. Chances are you're not really doing so well with that. So, yeah, there's other land. Doesn't mean it's necessarily ready. Doesn't mean that it's good. And some areas are, and we'll have to wait until we get offers like that. We don't go out and solicit. At least we haven't to this point. I don't know if that helps you.
Yeah, no, it's clear. And I mean, I'm torn on, well, I'm torn out. Then like Counselor Owen might have mentioned earlier, look at my mind is pretty much made up on this one. I think Kirkland Lake's got a great asset here that you can leave from literally your driveway, your garage, get on your four wheeler, skidoo, and just head out to the bush and uh and and enjoy nature, and especially that it's so close to us. So I think we've got a tough decision coming up.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, well, uh through there to uh Mr. Haas. Um, this may have been beyond your scope, but I know Mike Leahy has suggested um developing a conservation area, and I know many other municipalities have conservation areas either within them or or close to them. And if we're looking at long-term stewardship, I don't know a lot about conservation areas. But the little I do know is that uh the big their big thing is stewardship of the area that they control. And I'm I'm wondering if you know anything about uh the setup of a conservation authority for a specific area, um whether or not um that would be a viable proposal. Um, I'm certainly not in favor of of developing private uh riverside lots. Um. When I look around the area, we have a lot of lakes, but we don't have a lot of public access to those lakes. Uh, there's no public access that I know of to Canagami. There's only one in Sessa Kenica. Gold Lake courses off limits. Um, I'm not sure that there's uh public access to Crystal. Um. So the way I look at it, people are using that area now and uh although, yes, we might be able to profit from creating private lots along the river. I'm not sure that that's really where I'm at.
Um, let's let's break that in half here. Uh, the first one was about conservation areas. I looked at it in a general way. And um, no, it wasn't within my scope to explore that uh into great depth. What I, the reason I put in the report conservation or recreation area is that I think that if a conservation area becomes too onerous, it could be very heavy administrative view. I think a lot of the activities that happen now on that land base in terms of, let's go make a trail, let's do this, would change very quickly. Um, and I don't know that for a fact. I'm just saying that that that's what it would seem to me. But what if then you you look at it and um designate it as a recreation area similar to the trails behind the complex? Now, there's immediately, I think Bonnie uh Sakrider would uh agree with this. What about liability? What about who's going out if they're working on the trails and they get hurt? There there were those are all questions that have to be asked and um I think that we have a really good framework for answering those with the uh ski trail system behind the complex. And it may be the 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 better approach. Another thing just to take into account is when you look at block ten north of Swastika, we do not reach right up to Elsie Lake. That's Kirkland Lake Gold property on the other side. So if that, you know, we look at it, may want to have, see if we can get some kind of agreement with Kirkland Lake Gold for this as well. And I I don't know where the issue of liability and responsibility would lie with that. That's something we would have to look into. It's considerably larger than the scope of this. Um. Your second question was like with the lakefront properties or waterfront properties. Uh, yeah, there's every good reason to both say yes and no. One of the things that we ran into when we first did a pilot project at Winnie Lake was, you know, we had quite a few people come forward and say, I I want to buy that property. And I'm not letting anybody on that frigging lake. Whoa. Now we've gone from a public asset, uh accident, asset to locking out the public. At the same time, people are buying properties all through there. I had a conversation yes or last week with a lawyer from Toronto who just bought a lot north on uh Perron Lake. He's coming in this month and he wants to go through and see it and everything. Then I asked him like, well, how did you find out about this? And what are you not concerned about? You know, access and whatever. No, we have other properties too in other communities like rural, remote. We don't rely on public access. We, you know, we'll go in by four wheeler and stuff like that. I'm not saying that that's the right thing, but I think it behooves us to have an understanding of how does that work? So if it comes up in the future, at least then we're answering it intelligibly. Every time we do a public consultation, we do get hammered. How come you don't just sell the land? Why are you holding on to it? It's not productive for the community. Well, again, it's not productive if you're only looking at a dollar. But in this case, your recreational use, I would say you're being pretty very productive. What about stewardship? Well, and one of the concerns that we've always had, and we've seen it around us. So we sell a big swath of land, like maybe in the middle of TKL four or five. So person buys it. They're under no obligations as municipality is under the LMA. So they can bring in the cutters from Quebec and they can ship that wood out to Quebec and they cannot ha- do not have to replant. It's okay. They don't care. They got their money. So there's always that fine line. It's not just about, you know, selling it to somebody and they make a nice little cottage. It's also about, okay, how do we keep the public access? How do we ensure that the force is actually there? But how do we not you know, uh how how do I say this? Not avoid looking at all your management alternatives. Again, harvesting is one management tool among many. I'm babbling on that one, but I I I hope I've kind of touched on some of the points that are of importance.
Yeah, thank you.
Well?
Hey, thank you very much, uh, your worship. Um. I'm looking at the recommendations. Um, is there a way to uh, you have all this been resolved? Can we separate the two because you have harvesting Kirkland Lake landfill and Swastika North? Uh, is there a way to have that uh, the way I, the way I'm reading this looks as if it's all or nothing uh for all the recommendations here. Maybe I'm reading wrong. So I just wanted to know because I don't s- see anyone really complaining about Kirkland Lake landfill site. Uh, but then, of course, we do have a community uh not too happy with this Swastika North. So that's my first question. I have two more to go. Uh. My second question is that, uh to the best of your knowledge, have you have you seen something like this before where whereby harvesting is so close to an an organized community? Uh, that's been done uh i- i- in in the past because to me, I just don't understand that. Uh, even though uh we we talk about the monetary aspect of this, but then there are there are others too that you really articulated in your report, such as uh social recreation and all of that stuff. So uh i- i- in my view, I don't think the money, monetary part of it should trump uh everything else. So that's my uh second question. Have we? I- is there a way, does that have happened in the past whereby harvesting is very close to the community? And my third one is that I want to touch upon what Counselor Owens, uh I guess uh indirectly asked or directly, as the case might be. Um, uh, is there, is there a way uh to swap this uh area in Swastika for another area that will be uh far away from uh any community? Is there a way to to do that? That way, we could have time to study this uh this Swastika thing and do what we need to Swastika North harvesting and to get people down, uh maybe go over the LMA and then get people together to see what we can do for the future. I mean, there is no hurry as far as I'm uh concerned to uh to deal with that. So thank you very much.
Through you, your worship. Uh, yeah, they're good questions. Um, key point, no, there's no hurry. You don't have to rush into anything. There's uh, I mean, absolutely not. Are there uh, can the KL landfill block be separated from the rest? Yes, absolutely. It comes together this way i- in a sense, from the format of the report. But it's at council's discretion. You want to do the landfill one, by all means. We do want to do TKL five, but not four, six, yes, but with whatever council directs. So it can be split apart, not a problem with that at all. Um, have we seen harvesting so close uh to uh other communities? Actually, yes, here in Kirkland Lake. Uh, the L, uh sorry, the Tomisking Forestry Alliance um is harvesting nor uh by, was it north of Nettie and Goodfish? And one reference I made in the report was to having a GIS viewscape done so someone can see what the Blanche River would look like and how far, you know, the trees are set back. They're actually doing that at Goodfish. They're harvesting there and they're maintaining the same kind of um, they're they're going through the same approach with the residents there, uh according to what I read in the uh Tomisking Forestry Plan. Uh, other references, I saw that by Elk Lake. They had like the ski trails, they had other trails, and they were looking at more kind of arrangement can we make? One of the things I think to remember is the forestry industry in the general, they're very professional too. I mean, it's nice to say there's just some hick out there with a chainsaw and cutting everything down. It's not true. These companies, they put a lot of stock in how they are perceived by the public and by the market as well. So they belong to Sustainable Forestry Alliance. They belong to other organizations. It's in their interest, both politically and economically, to come to terms with residents. And that's what they were doing in Goodfish. So that's fairly close to town. They do that in other areas. That's the TFA. Uh, could we swap out blocks for further weight? I go back to your key point, Counselor. You're in no hurry. You don't have to. Right? I- if there's another block that comes up that is of interest to somebody, I'm sure they'll come forward as they did before. But there's no reason to have to swap anything out. You don't have to do anything.
Bill, can I comment on that? Uh, and that's along the same line as uh Counselor Shava. Uh. When you look at the Tomisking Forest uh plan and Abitibi, which is Timmins Cogman area, uh the existing companies that operate there like the uh Georgia Pacific Econ, I guess Rosco to some extent and Malletts. They're only using fifty percent of their cutting rates. So there there is lots of land or forestry out there that that they can cut him. The one that's, I mean, very attractive in Swastika is because of of the existing roads that is in there and and it's uh uh not a long distance to haul. So I think that's one of one of the main reasons why I think there would be a lot of interest in doing that. But there is plenty of uh of areas that they have the cutting rates to that uh they simply do, they haven't used them. They're only using about fifty percent. I got that report from the Ministry of uh Natural Resources. Uh, secondly, the, an example of what took place up in Airport Falls just in the last six months. Uh. There is a a lake located almost, it it would be in close proximity, the same as uh even closer than Elsie Lake to Swastika uh in in Airport Falls. And it was Crown Lamb. They went in and cut it. And, well, if you take a ride out to Doby and see what happened out there along the highway, uh and that's what they're left with. I had somebody send me a photograph of it and uh it it did not look very pleasant to the eye. So I I can appreciate the concern that the people from Swastika have. Uh, anybody that's ever walked back there or four wheeled, it it's uh, it's beautiful back in there. And they don't want to lose it, and I understand why. But uh, I I think to some extent, it it's it's advantageous to the to the uh the our logging company, forestry companies uh to to have it that close and be able to haul it out. So uh, that that concerns me. Uh, and you mentioned in behind Bernhard Norset. Uh, as I mentioned, I think I said to you today, there's they're cutting back in there. They're coming across the uh the Goodfish Airport Road area. And those big logging trucks are going to rip the crap right out of our our roads. Uh, so there's a lot to consider here.
Uh, if I could make some comments, at one point too, I would like to um open the door to Jeff Barton to participate. He's a forestry consultant. He can make some more comments on some of the specifics you mentioned, Mr. Mayor. Um, is Swastika attractive because it's so close? Sure. But really, it's close to other harvesting areas that they will be working in. Right? They, we're a large landowner, but like I was saying to uh Counselor Owens, it's not necessarily of rich in forestry across the whole base, and we're small compared to the rest. The areas you're talking about, those are the Crown Forest. And they don't go at a hundred percent of their cutting rights because it has to be a sustainable forest as well. So they'll always monitor, manage that. Um, when they, you know, the reference you made by Doby, y- yeah, exactly, but those are private. My understanding, and they don't have any obligation. That's why I was replying replying to Counselor Owen where, you know, if you start selling off land, that's very, that that's a fine and feasible approach, but understand that could be the result too. Right? So, yeah, there's a lot of balancing on that.
Oh, I I agree with you on the private land. They don't have to reforest. That's a, their discretion. So I I understand what you're saying on that part, but uh let's vote with Counselor Owen as a stand up.
Yeah, I'm I'm not disagreeing with Mr. Haas. There is no time. Uh, there's there's no time element for council to make a decision on, from the forestry side. But from the resident's side, I don't think it's I don't think it's it's fair for us to delay and delay and delay. So they're living with uncertainty, not knowing what's going to happen in their own backyard. Um from that point of view, I think I think you know, we should come up with a decision within a fairly reasonable time. And if we decide not to forest that area, then they may come up with their own plans on how that area could be developed and how they could get volunteers together to do it a- and and form a a partnership with the town similar to what Tobin Operating Authority has, uh similar to what we have with Culver Park. And it would enhance the value of life for Swastika and for all of Kirkland Lake and the area. And um the resulting i- if done properly, the resulting cost to taxpayers would be zero. Yes, we would lose the income, but I think I think we have to come up with a decision for the residents sake in a relatively uh quick time. Thank you.
If I may comment, I wanted to add, I agree with councillor Shaba. The motion that we have uh tabled basically, it's grouped into a lot of different suggestions. And I some I could probably live with. There's others I can't. So if I had to vote on it tonight, I'd have to say no. Uh so I think we have to do. I prefer deferring this decision and coming back, breaking this up uh into separate motions and uh uh time of the essence, I agree, maybe at the next council meeting. But anyway, uh I think councillor White had her hand up and that councillor Owens.
Sorry, can the clerk let us know who is the first and seconder on this motion?
Right now I have it as Rick Ol- moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff.
Okay, um so what I propose is I don't have specific problems with any of this going the way it is written. I agree that block ten should be removed. I agree that we should direct um to prepare an RFP. I do have strong, strong reservations about creating um future residential recreation development, but it's just saying that we should seek um sorry, that staff should look into it. We can we can cross that bridge when we come to it. There's no harm in them looking into it. And the portion of revenue is generated, go back into redoing this. There's no problem. Yes, there's a lot in it. But when you piece them out, nothing, I don't know, I wouldn't vote against the entire thing. All all four proposals are solid proposals in my opinion. But I'm not the first or the seconder.
Councillor Owens?
All I was gonna s- I was gonna ask the same thing. Who's the mover and a seconder? And we all know that it's up to the mover and a seconder to modify this however, which way. So I don't see that we need to defer this any longer. I think for peace of mind and to for we just need to come up with a decision, just put on our pants and make a decision on this one. No need to defer something that's just going to come back and the same outcome is going to happen two weeks from now.
Any further questions, comments? Uh. Mr. Huss?
Yes, um I I just I I would like, if we could, just give Mr. Barton a few moments just to address some of the technical issues. I I I think it may help with the public at your at your forbearance, so.
Okay. Alright, thanks, Will. Thank you, your worship and members of council. Um just a couple of points I'd like to to touch on with with respect to this. Firstly, um Ms. Clarkson, it's compelling work that you put together. I've I've been in this field along what feels like a long time and have been at numerous sort of public um information sessions, dispute resolution type things. And uh having having the number the number of people involved and the um passion with which they've come forward is uh is really notable and and admirable. So I I I appreciate that. And I I think you should be proud of the work you and your peers have done. Um as a as a professional forester, one of one of the really guiding key pieces of uh guidance and our key objectives is finding is achieving sustainability in for in forest management. And that gets kind of portrayed in in this in a graphic you may have seen over the years, the kind of a graphic of social objectives and economic objective and environmental objectives. And I think one of the things this exercise has displayed is that there's a really strong uh social objective or social uh interest in the area that we're talking about. So it doesn't come at at the uh it's not an either or. You don't you don't pick one of the three and and plow forward. You can you can typically work towards finding the sweet spot and and you hope to find some common ground. I think in the important part of this is that um or at least from my perspective, one of the important parts is is how strong that that social piece is and that becomes kind of a lens on how how the the town of the town of TKL hits that mark of of sustainability. Um I wanted to touch on the comment about Georgia Pacific and Ecom under harvesting their allocations. I'm not I'm not well versed in the Abbottibbi Forest and I so I don't want to um pretend that I am, but in but I'm very familiar with the Tamiskaming Forest. Both of those that com- that company over the last twenty five years since its inception harvested about twenty, sorry, about ninety ninety one, ninety two percent of its available um utilized about ninety two percent of its available harvest allocations. And that's that's been consistent. Ecom and Georgia Pacific previously grants are two of the are the two big players in that entity. So I I'm I'm fairly, I'm quite confident that that stat isn't applicable to the Tamiskaming Forest. It may be on the Abbottibbi, but I just wanted to clarify that. Uh I think Will talked a little bit about the the sort of the theme of asset management with respect to this undertaking. And that's really since we since Will and I and some of the other the staff, former and current staff uh got into working on this project back in two thousand and eight or so, really, that's that's been the theme. You you have a great ad- address. Councillor White, you'd asked sort of why you need that. And I I think it you you're I think you're fortunate to have some sort of a guiding document rather than trying to tackle things on an ad hoc basis. I think the the numbers are around thirty five hundred hectares, I believe, of of uh of municipal forest land, productive forest land that we're dealing with. That's a substantial amount of of land. Most most municipalities don't have that. Uh so you've got an asset to work with. When when we were working on it back in sort of the late um you know, two thousand nine, two thousand and ten, the lumber, the forest industry was really in the tank. Didn't make a lot of sense. If you look at it as an investment or as an asset that you're managing, didn't make a lot of sense at the time to be trying to to sell that a- asset at the bottom of the market. Kirkland Lakers, I think, are pretty familiar with the ups and downs of the mining sector. The forestry sector isn't that different. Um so we were in we were in the tank. The forest industry was completely in the tank. To go out and try to sell that wood at that time didn't make a whole lot of sense. Now we're the we're in we're in uncharted, you know, similar to our COVID experiences. We're in uncharted territories in terms of the lumber market. If you're going to do something uh from an industrial perspective, you're at the top of the market right now. That I'm not saying I'm not trying to steer the the conversation or the decision, but that's kind of the 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 fact of the matter in terms of the the economics of it. Um as I mentioned, the um I I I believe there's some opportunities for solutions that keep everybody uh reasonably satisfied without, you know, blowing up that forest. Comments about um seeing other clear cuts? As I as I mentioned, I've been in this business a long time. Clear cuts, the year after they're done, aren't aren't pretty. But five years after, I think they're again, beauty is in the eye of the beholder. You see a young, vigorous, healthy forest. I think that's something to be proud of. Um one of the things that if I if you don't mind me take shooting a plug for one of the uh one of your neighboring municipalities, the city of Tamiskaming Shores has been working on an effort uh to get a few more people out to the forest and see some of these sites that have been either cutting in progress or, you know, subsequent to that, the tree planting and the young young forests. I think uh on their behalf, I'd like to extend that invitation and and suggest that there may be some interest or value in having a look at some of these, some of the progressions of of these sites. The la- the last point I wanted to make was respect was with with respect to the conservation authorities. I I don't have I don't have experience in setting them up. I have uh little have had a little bit of exposure through my career to them, but certainly not at the front end of them. But one of the comparables, if you look at a park setting, one of the most popular oldest provincial parks in the in the province is Algonquin Provincial Park. Uh most people see that giant blob in the center of center of uh sort of central Ontario. That park allows logging. Uh it has always allowed park logging. It generates a significant a number number of jobs and is really pivotal to the economy of that part of the province. I my point only being that I think you can you can do both in some of in in some of the lands that you have. It doesn't have to be an either or. Um I'll leave it there. Thank you very much for uh giving me a chance to make a few comments.
Jeff, can I uh Mayor Pat kind of like? Uh Wolf had brought up the uh the idea of a lawn uh uh being set for uh reforestation, planting of trees. Would you have to wait five years before you could replant? Along how long uh? What would the abnormal procedure or timeframe?
So 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 there's 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 always there's always parallels between what we do in forestry and and agriculture. So if you looked at a crop of corn, um it gets harvested in September. If you said, okay, put that on the ground and then immediately plant it, you you're stuck with a lot of um of that residual material. In in the forestry context, harvesting immediately after the or planting immediately after the harvesting tends to leave a lot of um debris of slash, so branches, tops, et cetera, on on the site. If that if that material is left to decay a little bit, what happens is it it becomes you you've seen branches that have been dead for a year, two years versus fresh, you know, a branch that you just take off a tree. It it doesn't break up as well. So when the site preparation goes over that site, it tends, if you if you do it in a sort of fresh environment, the the branches and slash, they bend, they don't they don't break. If it's left for a year or so, they they start to get brittle. So when that equipment goes back over to site prepare, the the material breaks up um somewhat more and the tree planting is more effective. It can certainly be done. Um people refer to it as hot planting. You kind of do it right on the heels of of the tree planting. You you can do it. There's just there's a bit of a downside in terms of the efficacy of doing it that way.
I think also
tighten that gap up, though. It's it's doable. There's there is a downside to it.
Like we did a harvest, uh we had a harvest done in uh Clear Aqua area. And that was end of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And I believe that the replanting begins in twenty twenty one. Now, I have to check again with Ecom, but uh that was for the same purposes. Let it let it settle a little bit and then go in. That was why I was saying, your worship, the while the factors may change according to where you are, it does not affect the point that we need to publish timelines and let people know what's going on so that they do have some assurance on that that it's not just a spot that's been forgotten. That's something we can do on the communication side.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Owen?
Yeah, just to speak to the motion, um since I'm the mover. Uh it says, uh okay, removed removing those mining claims and the staff be directed to prepare a report on the feasibility of partitioning these claims and selling them for future residential or recreational development. I I just want to make it clear that that is only a report.
That's right.
That is not a decision to do that. Because where I stand right now, I am not in favor of doing that. Although, subject to that report being done, I may in fact change my mind. So I just wanted to make it clear that that is only calling for a report. It's not calling for the establishment of lots along the Blanche River. Thank you.
And if I could, sir, um it also does not get into setting price points and lot dimensions or anything else. This is just simply what power, what responsibilities do we have if we even want to move in that direction? That's all.
It's another option.
That's right.
Any further comments or questions?
Uh yeah, I just uh I would be comfortable if those blocks pertaining to uh Swastika uh north uh be set aside same as a block ten and to be prevented from harvesting. If this motion could be amended uh to include those lots, I believe uh we have TK five or TK six side. If this those lots lots to be excluded from harvesting, uh I'd be comfortable with that if this motion is uh amended to include that. Thank you.
I would suggest that could be very easily accomplished by simply taking out the reference to TKL blocks four, five, six, as described in this report. Uh just removing that section off of uh the second recommendation. Then it says they preparing a request for proposal and harvesting a timber on what is the uh landfill site. And the recommendations pertaining to pertaining to harvest practices as presented in this report be applied.
Okay, and I don't know if the clerk will let me know what the procedure is by move an amendment to this resolution. Can I do that?
So councillor Owen is the mover? Uh depends on if councillor Owen would like to amend the motion or not.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Owen?
Um the way I'm reading this motion, it's just preparing a request for proposal. It's not a decision to harvest. So I have no problem. In fact, I would like that left in there because then we may have a dollar value when we're balancing off against the social recreational and uh environmental values. The fact that we call for a request for proposal does not mean that we have to accept any of them and it does not mean we've made a decision to harvest those forest areas. So I do not want the motion changed.
Uh your worship, can I uh speak to that? Well, I I I don't think people will go all the way out. I mean, I in my private practice, I write a lot of proposals. But if it ever occurs to me that this is just an exercise in fertility, I might not want to undertake that. So if people realize that this is uh may not be going anywhere, they may be reluctant to uh uh put in a proposal. And I understand that you know, councillor Owens, he's told we should put this to rest. And the only way to put this to rest is to exclude those blocks and then that will put it to rest. Again, if you don't do that, then that means that the people in Swastika, they have to wait another day for another proposal to come in or proposals uh to come in and then to see what the council would would decide. So I I I think that uh in my view, those blocks should be excluded so that we can put a closure to this. Thank you.
Councillor Owens?
Yeah, I just uh I agree with councillor Shaba on this one. At this point, I think it's a waste of time even to go down that road. Uh I feel more comfortable taking block four, five and six off this motion. Um I have no intentions. I don't care what the cost is of uh of maybe harvesting, comparing whatever. I think going down that road does not give closure to this matter. So my opinion, that needs to be taken off.
Goes back to you, councillor Owen.
Yeah, um when we had our forestry expert, Mr. Burton, speaking, he said there are options that could be available to us in terms that we could protect uh what we want to protect and perhaps uh forested in a way that we could also get revenue. I'm not a forestry expert. I'm not a forestry expert. I have no idea what Mr. Barton talking about. I know that it's his business. And if we take that out, we're closing the door on, um, potentially a way that it could, could do good for both. So and, and again, I like to have all the information possible when I make a decision. And as was said earlier, it's not just economics, but economics is one of the factors involved in making the decision. If we don't go for the call for proposal, we're eliminating, uh, a certain amount of information that may or may not be key in our decision-making. So I, I understand that I did say I'd like a resolution for the residents quickly. And I still stand by that. I can live with removing it. But I voiced my opinions and I can live with removing it.
Uh, Will?
I, actually, uh, the counselor touched on the point that I was going to make, so I withdraw.
Eugene, I understand. Go ahead, Eugene.
Yeah, no, I agree with Counselor Owen. I think we should at least listen to, uh, what can be done with that property. Uh, you know, if there's a negotiation between the community that, uh, wants to save all those trails and the people that want to harvest some of those trees. There, I mean, there may be a way of doing that and I, I agree with Counselor Owen that we should at least look at that alternative. And if, I mean, if we can always say that you can't do it. You know, we, we're not going to allow them to harvest it, but I would think at least let's, you know, give it some thought and see if something can be done, uh, and make both groups happy. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to put this, uh, to motion.
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that report number 2021 dash dev dash zero one one entitled proposed timber harvesting Perkin Lake landfill and Swastika north be received. That staff be directed to remove block 10 mining claims HR 593, HR 594, L 4325, HR 756, HR 593, HR 594, L 4325, HR 756, RSC 204, 209 and 10 from current harvesting consideration and a report be prepared on the feasibility of designating block 10 as a municipal conservation area or recreation area. That staff be directed to prepare a request for proposal for the harvesting of timber on PCL 9969. Section CST mining claim L 28300, Goché Township being known as Site 1, Perkin Lake landfill block, TKL blocks four, five and six as described in this report and that recommendations pertaining to harvest practices as presented in this report be applied. That mining claims L 14192, L 40218, L 24029 and L 6083 abutting of Blanche River be removed from current harvesting consideration and that staff be directed to prepare a report on the feasibility of partitioning these claims and selling them for future residential or recreational development. And that staff allocate a portion of any revenues generated through any harvesting activity towards the cost of updating the land owner's management agreement, preparing mapping needed for any harvesting being commissioned.
Can we have a, uh, recorded vote please?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Rick did say he had no problem taking out those blocks, but when clerk read, she included those blocks. So could we get clarification from the mover?
I agree.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Counselor Owen.
Yeah, I did agree to, uh, to, uh, take out those blocks. Um, like I say, it's important that the residents of Swastika have peace of mind and.
Yeah.
I, 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 I have a read, please.
So I've taken up that town, so just that part of it will now say that staff be directed to prepare a request for proposal for the harvesting of timber on PCL 9969. Section CST mining claim L 28300, Goché Township being known as Site 1, Perkin Lake landfill block. I think that's still there. And then I take that out and then I say, and that recommendations pertaining to harvest practices as presented in this report be applied.
Yes, thank you.
And request a recorded vote. We go to Counselor Ivanoff.
Agreed.
Counselor Owen?
Yay.
Counselor Owen?
So this, just make sure before, there's no cut, everything's removed from cutting right now, right? In Swastika?
In Swastika.
Yes, we're, we're just going out for the proposal for information.
Without Swastika, like, like connection is spotty at best right now. So before I, I vote any which way, I want to make sure that I'm not shooting myself in the foot here.
Yeah.
Okay, so no yay, no Swastika yay.
Counselor Shaba?
Uh, yes, I agree. No Swastika harvesting.
Yay.
Um, Mayor Kylie?
Nay. Motion carried, six to one, or five, or five to one, sorry. Thank you. Item, uh, six point two, uh, COVID update, COVID-19 update, the Ms. Sackrader.
Thank you, your worship, through you to council. As of April 3rd at 12:01 a.m., the COVID-19 response framework consisting of color-coded zones has been paused and all districts in the province have begun a province-wide shutdown for a minimum of 28 days. The impacts of these measures will be evaluated after one month to determine if it is safe to lift the restrictions or if they need to be extended. Therefore, there are changes to town facilities and operations. At this time, the following buildings are closed to the public. The Joe Mavernat Community Complex, the Museum of Northern History and Heritage North, except for scheduled vaccination clinics. The Texentennial Library is open for curbside pickup and delivery and patrons are permitted to enter the library to access computers and photocopiers. Town Hall, Public Works and Development Services are open for essential municipal business with all COVID-19 restrictions in place. All residents are asked to conduct their business by phone or virtually if they're able to do so. With the early spring weather, outside amenities will open earlier than usual with COVID-19 restrictions in place. These include Civic Park, the Dog Park, Kinross Park, the Skate Park and baseball fields. The Community Services Department will announce as these areas are open to the public over the next two weeks. Fitness classes will be offered virtually and outdoors during the shutdown. Non-essential staff in buildings that have been closed have been laid off or redeployed to other departments. As a reminder to our residents, during the province-wide shutdown, it is illegal to gather indoors with anyone you do not live with. You should only go out for necessities, such as work if you can't do it remotely, to school, for groceries, to the pharmacy, to help vulnerable people and for exercise and physical activity. If you live alone, you can have close contact with only one other household. You must stay at least two meters apart from everyone else and wear a mask or face covering during the permitted events or social gatherings. You should not travel outside your region or the province unless absolutely necessary. For all events and social gatherings, if indoors, it is not allowed except with members of your own household and if outside, must be limited to five people. Thank you and stay safe. This concludes the COVID-19 update.
Any comments or questions from Ms. Sackrader? Do you have a motion?
Moved by Casey Owen, seconded by Stacy White. Be it resolved that the verbal COVID-19 update be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.3, 2021, uh, capital budget, uh, dollar submission for the ice plant upgrade, upgrade, uh, Ms. Sackrader.
Thank you very much, your worship, through you to council. I'm not sure if Chad Fong is on here as well. I did ask him if he'd like to join us. I just don't see his name, but if he's here, he might pop on if there's questions that I'm not able to answer. So last year during capital budget deliberations, we did bring to council the replacement of the, um, the chiller in the ice plant and it was mandated by the INI Boiler Inspection Insurance Company that in order to ensure the ice plant for 2021, it would have to be replaced because they're not insurable after 25 years. When we brought that to council, um, we did have a funding request in to an ICIP grant for many items at the community complex. We also had one in for the museum. Um, so council did approve the replacement conditional on the funding. We did not find out until August that we were not successful with the funding application. So because funding was unknown at the time that we would be able to do the replacement, we did approach BI and I and they said that they would allow the plant to operate in the 2020 fall and the 2021 spring and then we could replace the ice plant this summer. Um, and they would still insure us for that time period. So unfortunately, the time is now. Um, what is, what is, uh, what looks very promising is another letter that we received. So the town did receive in November, um, a letter from the province of Ontario. They just did designate an actual item, uh, number that we would be allocated dollars for. It's $203,000. It does come from a COVID-19 resilience infrastructure stream and eligible projects do include upgrades and retrofits. So staff do, did have to still complete an application, so the application went in for this, these dollars to be allocated towards the ice plant. However, we have not heard yet. Um, in consultation with the province representatives, they have said that we will know this spring. So that does give us a few months. Uh, they have not indicated yet. So where the problem occurs is that if we do not place our order now for the ice plant, because it has to be manufactured, we will lose the ability to replace it this summer. It's very likely we're going to get 100% funding from the province because they've allocated the dollars. However, I can't guarantee that's going to happen. So what I am asking, um, council at this point is to pre-approve dollars for the ice plant in approximately the $200,000 range with the cross your fingers hope that we do get 100% funding from the province through their COVID fund. There are a couple of alternatives, um, however, staff don't recommend them. We can operate an ice plant without insurance, so it's not an illegal position to be in. It is a bit concerning because if the ice plant failed, we would then have to shut down the ice plant during the season and then start the manufacture of the replacement parts. So we would lose the ice season, um, which means unhappy skaters and probably a, a big loss in revenue. The other concern is if you operate a plant without insurance, if there was a failure, um, somehow in the plant and there were negative health effects to people, then we would be considered liable for that. So for, and the other option then is to not or operate the ice plant next year, which of course counselor, or sorry, staff do not recommend to council. So that brings us back to the recommendation and it is that, is that staff do recommend that you approve allocation of dollars toward the ice plant. At this time, it would be a pre-approval of 2021 capital. Then we can go ahead and start the process. We, we have to go up for quotations, obviously, of something this large. Um, and until we actually go up to quotations, they don't pinpoint the exact figure it's going to, to cost us with the hopes that it will be funded.
Counselor Owens?
Um, thanks Bonnie for that report. Um, I, I don't think we have a choice if we're going to move forward with this. Uh, um, if we wait or delay this in any way, then we risk, uh, not getting the parts in time. I had to order a set of blades for bandsaw at work and it took me two and a half months to get them. So I can just imagine a nice plan, how long we will, uh, have to wait for that. And there's no way that I would feel comfortable running, uh, the ice plant without insurance on it. That's a liability I'm just not willing to live with. Uh, we've heard stories in the media about people losing their lives when these things fail. So it, it's not even worth considering that in my opinion. Thanks.
Counselor White?
Um, I'm just curious, Madam Clerk, who is the mover and seconder on this one?
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Rick Owen.
Okay, what I would like to see is, um, an, an amendment, um, including um, a portion to be saved each year or to be put away each year in budget uh, for the next 25 years again, uh, so that when this needs to be replaced next time, we will have funds set aside, if that's acceptable to Mr. Shaba.
Yeah, it is. Makes sense to me.
My only comment, Counselor White, is I think what we really need to do is look at the overall picture and then come up with a, uh, a reserve policy each year to put X percentage of levy away uh, for capital, uh, projects or whatever the case be, not, not just specifically the ice plant. And, uh, but I agree, we, that, that has to be part of it. I, I think we, we've got to come up, we have never had a, uh, a, a reserve policy in place and that's, uh, been missing for years and we've talked about it. So I think that could be included in that, uh, as part of that. Just a suggestion.
Absolutely. I do agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that we do need an overall policy, uh, on this. However, we can solve this issue today. So, and we can always change our mind later, right? So if we get this on, uh, on a motion today, at least one problem's checked off.
We're calling you, Rick. Rick?
Oh, sorry, I couldn't hear you. So can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I certainly support that Counselor White's change to the motion. Um, and trust me, we'll do the same to the fire department. I mean, they know how long their trucks are going to last, um, until such time that we have an overall policy. Um, so we don't put another council in the position that we are in now. Um, and so that we don't put rate pairs in a bad position of having to come up with, with the total price. I mean, we don't know what the price of that equipment will be in 25 years, but at least there'll be a good chunk there. Also, uh, to Ms. Sackrader, I, uh, I agree, any of the other options are just not acceptable. It's, it's an unreasonable liability to run without the insurance. It's, you can't run an arena without a nice manufacturing plant. My only question is, the manufacturers know that this has a, a 25 life, uh, 25-year, um, insurance life. Do they not manufacture extra ones? Like, do we, like, I, I'm really just stretching here and I assume that everybody's already checked. It just seems a little extreme that we're, we're buying a part that has to be fabricated. If it's only a part, wouldn't they have made more?
I'll, I'll start the answer. Okay, I'll let Mr. Fong jump in. He's, he's got his hand up. He's going to answer better than I could.
And he likes talking to me.
Go ahead, Todd.
Yes, um, it, they're all, um, they're fabricated differently depending on the size of your ice plant, the horsepower. Uh, the size of your ice surface, obviously. So no one is the same, really.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Fong clarified that for me.
But, but in saying that, there's newer technology. So thi- this is a shell and tube type of, um, unit. Now, the newer technology is a plate and frame which, which we will go to. And you don't have to change that out in 25 years. Every 10 years, you have to basically change gaskets in it. basically change gaskets in it. And they say, oh, it'll, it'll be about every ten years, you gotta spend about maybe ten, twelve thousand dollars on it. So that's the newer technology, and that's the better route to go.
Yes.
So going that route, we will, we'll never have to go through this issue again, so to speak. It'll, it'll actually be more efficient, but maybe a little bit more initially, a little more money, but long term, it'll basically last forever.
And we'll be able to get insurance past the twenty-five years?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or concerns?
Motion moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Rick Owen. Be resolved that report number two thousand twenty-one dash CS dash zero five entitled two thousand twenty-one capital dollar submission ice plant upgrade be received. That staff be directed to initiate the procurement of the ice plant upgrade to ensure it can be manufactured and installed in two thousand twenty-one, and that funds be budgeted yearly for a reserve towards the next ice plant upgrade.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item six point four, service delivery review. The SAC writer.
Thank you very much, your worship, through you to council. We have been talking about facilities management for the past couple of years at the council level, and I won't go through all of the history of it, but you'll, you will notice that, starting with Strategy Core in their operational review, they did talk about coordination of facilities management, investments in facility needs to be better managed, and we should converge and coordinate facilities man- maintenance. In two thousand twenty, we did look at a new organizational structure that was developed and led by the C A O in consult- consultation with our senior management team. And there was a bit of discussion at closed meetings, and then when we came back to the open meeting on July fourteenth, under the area of facilities, the report basically says that we have four different departments engaged in facility maintenance and operations, and facilities have been amalgamated into one management and maintenance department with a strong focus on maintenance and management capability. This response rests with the community services department, already very competent in this area, with cooperation to coordinate with tech pioneer residence personnel and maintenance resources at that facility. The step will align processes, procurement, asset management capabilities, and continuity of facility services across the organization. So this organization structure was approved by council, and that is attached for your review. Then in our strategic plan that was concurrently happening at the same time, in the area of achieve sustainable operational excellence, one of the action items said analyze the benefit of introducing a facilities management department. And in the second pillar of Build the Team, we talked about the need for facilities management position. So this was at the June sixteenth meeting. It was presented by the manager of land planning and, and development and was adopted by council. So there were two action items that council directed in the adoption of the strategic plan. And in the area of facilities, one was a complete service delivery review. So on December first, you did have the presentation at the council level by W S C S, and that they did recommend that implementation plan be prepared as part of the two thousand twenty-one work plan. And the final report was attached to, to these council minutes. So this is a more information than what you were given at the December meeting. So with asset management regulations coming into effect over the next few years, we have to understand clearly our current state of facilities and include them in our long-term management plan. Lifescale costs, levels of service, and financing strategy has to be analyzed and developed. And we need to have a clear plan to develop what are we, what should we be investing in? What should we divest from? And what should we redevelop? Building condition assessments will be paramount. When you look at the financial considerations, they're great. W S C S, in their report, states that the town would need to invest fifteen million in facilities. The annual repayment would be eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars annually over twenty-five years, and that's if we maintain things the way they are. Facilities management is definitely woven throughout Kirkland Lake strategic plan, so I won't read through that, but you'll see that there are a number of different areas where we do talk about facility management in the, in the plan. So that brings us back to the recommendation. And this is basically coming from page nineteen of the full report. So there are six different recommendations in the W S C S report. And that is what we are presenting to you to deliberate on this evening. Staff are recommending that we begin to implement the six major recommendations that are identified in the service delivery review. And there is a lot of information. They've done a very good job on their plan. I certainly can attempt to take any questions.
Other questions from council? Counselor White.
So last meeting when this was brought up, I kind of flipped out because the, the use of the word department versus division. So thank you for the clarification on that. I thought, oh, we're creating a whole new situation. So I do apologize for last meeting. So thank you for the clarification. I do, number five on the recommendations of confirm the team, new roles and responsibility. So in that aspect, does that mean that managers and supervisors will be joining like a coalition or a specific committee to go through all this? Is that what that means?
It basically means that we are a little bit disjointed right now in terms of the way we approach our facilities. So we have two facility managers, one that is out of this department, one that is out of tech pioneer residents, and they both share the responsibility throughout the town. But we aren't maybe as coordinated as we could or should be. So this kind of pushes us forward a bit to work better as a team and determine if we have any gaps. So there's not a, there's not a need to bring more people on. I think it's, it's a need to bring people together to determine can we as a staff adhere to and maintain the gaps, or do we need to look at, at something else?
Counselor Owen.
Yeah. To the merit to Ms. Sackrider for clarifying something for me. And that is not bringing on more staff. Because I certainly am not in favor of bringing on any more staff anywhere in the town at this point in time. And if I was, I think I would be lynched walking down government road. So thank you for clarifying that. This means we are not adding any more staff. I'm saying that for the public, Ms. Sackrider, not for you. Thank you.
Questions or comments?
Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be resolved that report number two thousand twenty-one dash CS dash zero zero six entitled service delivery review facilities be received. That staff be directed to begin to implement the six major recommendations slash opportunities from the service delivery review of facility. Number one, undertake facilitated senior management workshop, establish decision matrix slash tree to guide facility decisions and determine mission dependency index. The estimated investment in facilities based upon the current priorities is approximately eight point five million dollars over the next four years. Develop the facility condition index, F C I. Building condition assessments are required for the purpose of meeting asset management plane, plan regulatory requirements over a five eight eight slash seventeen and P S three two eight zero asset retirement obligation. This is the first phase of a facility master plan. Think long term, not short term fixes that cost more in the long run. Utilizing the principles of facilities management, undertake a five-year review of existing energy consumption for each facility. As part of the condition assessments, collect information on building equipment, age, energy utilization, conservation rating. Implement a work order asset management system in concert with public works. Confirm the team, new roles and responsibilities. Consider retaining facilities management professionals to oversee the team and develop a long-term facility master plan. And establish a change management program to ensure the integration of facility management across the organization.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item six point five, request to enter in an encroachment agreement. Ms. McNamara.
Thank you, your worship. Through you to council, we received a request to enter into an encroachment agreement with Two Government Road West for underground services related to their electrical. So they will be crossing a portion of the, of the sidewalk that'll go from the hydro pole over to their building. And we did receive a letter from the contractor who will be completing the work. And they did indicate that they will repair and replace all the paving stones. They have been in contact with our Public Works Road supervisors, so that's all right on that end. Council may decide not to permit this encroachment. However, this might not be feasible, and it may be a significant setback to the owner's business plans. There is a revenue source associated with an encroachment agreement. However, there is no annual revenue associated with this request as we do not have this set up in our user fee bylaw. So there is an attached image just showing you the location of the proposed services. And if everybody's okay with that, we'd like to present a bylaw to be passed with the encroachment agreement.
Any comments or questions? None noted. We go to a motion.
Moved by Casey Owen, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Be resolved that report number two thousand twenty-one dash dev dash zero one two entitled request to enter into an encroachment agreement with Two Government Road West for underground services be received. And that staff be directed to prevent a bylaw to authorize the Marion Clerk to execute an encroachment agreement for Two Government Road West for underground third.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item six point six, on the improvement plan application and recommendations. Mr. Rolf Haas.
Thank you, through your worship. At the most recent Economic Development Committee meeting, we had a president, an application that we were considering. And this is from Ms. Sukin's regarding upgrades under the Community Improvement Plan. The committee endorsed the application and has requested that council consider it for funding.
I believe the application was fairly straightforward. Any questions or concerns from council members? None noted. Go to a motion.
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Rick Owen. Be resolved that memorandum number two thousand twenty-one dash P D C dash zero zero one entitled Community Improvement Plan Application Recommendations Economic Development Committee be received. And that council approve a maximum five thousand dollars disbursement for building renovations and a maximum five thousand dollars disbursement for facade improvements to be drawn from the Community Improvement Program for the applications submitted by Ms. Karen Sukin's for fourteen Government Road West for Flint Lake.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item six point seven, recruitment and selection policy. Ms. Cassandra Young, H R supervisor.
Thank you, your worship, and through you to council. So the strategic plan had identified a need to review the policies and bring them up to date to ensure consistency. So what I've done today is I've, I've reviewed our hiring policy along with the addendum number one and two. And I've put them together, and I've made a few changes to the original policies. The most notable changes would be the addition to the headings to organize the policy and to allow for easier referencing. I've removed all information that referenced the former daycare as it no longer pertains to the organization anymore. I've also made changes to the posting vacancies process. So the most, the biggest part of that process that I've changed was that non-union job vacancies may be posted internally and or externally at the discretion of management to promote succession planning within the organization. As well, I noted that unionized job vacancies will be posted as per the collective agreements. So this change, this change this change allows for succession planning, which is a strategic priority. So, sorry. So, other than that, I am welcome to answer any questions if you have any regarding the specifics of the policy that I've merged the three into the one.
Any questions from councils or concerns? None noted? Motion to accept.
Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Be resolved that memorandum number two thousand twenty-one dash H R dash zero zero seven entitled Recruitment and Selection Policy be received. That council for the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake hereby repeal policy numbers corp two thousand twenty dash zero one zero, zero one eleven, or zero eleven and zero twelve. That council for the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake hereby approves the recruitment and selection policy as presented. And that staff be directed to insert the approved policy into the corporate policy manual and upload the recruitment and selection policy to the town website.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item six point eight. C A, C A O recruitment. Mr. Steadholm entering the C A O.
I'm taking this off. So anyways, hating us. The thing is, is that I came to you two weeks ago and asked you guys to talk amongst yourself and talk amongst people that you know in the community in regards to how do you want to go out and recruit for a new C A O. So once again, you know, this won't be a, a short process. I hope to have somebody in here by, you know, mid-June, early June. But, you know, that takes a time to get through that process. And so, you know, I'm leaving it up to you guys whether you want to go with a headhunter or whether you want to do with an internal committee made up of counselors and, and myself in regards to moving this process forward. And I'll turn it over to you guys for discussion.
Perhaps, Don, can you kind of give us a summary of the responses you got, the suggestions? Were they all over the map?
Oh, well, they're all, and I don't, I don't have them here.
Okay.
Yeah.
So open for discussion with the council members. Counselor Owen.
Yeah, personally, I'm not in favor of hiring a headhunter. I think that we learned from having been through the process once. I, I think it was an eye-opener for us and, and some of the things that we perhaps placed a high priority on, we realized that weren't, they weren't necessarily the best fit for the situation in Kirkland Lake. I think we all have a a much more realistic picture of what we want in a C A O. So and, and I think you got good response from the counselors on, on what we wanted, what we were looking for in a C A O. So I would be in favor of, of forming a committee of council to work in conjunction with Don to find a new C A O and not spend rate pairs money on a hit and miss situation with a headhunter, I think, properly advertised in the, in the proper publications. And also, I'd like to put the caveat in that I would like to have Wishart Law vet anybody that we would consider. It's just a little bit of a safeguard for us. They, they have more experience and more resources to, to look into to an applicant's background than we do. And I, I think that would be the way to go. Thank you.
Counselor Ivanoff.
Yeah, Mr. Steadholm, I know that you've done some work on looking for a replacement for yourself. Yeah, Mr. Steadholm, I know that you've done some work on looking for a replacement for yourself. What has your experience been in the last month, I guess, or whatever time you've spent? I know you've talked to some of your, I guess, friends or people that are involved in municipal politics. Have you had any success? Have you had people that are interested or is it, is that potentially the way we go is simply go out and advertise in whatever newspapers or in municipal publications? Does that work for us or is that something that's not going to work?
Yeah, that could work for you. Like, I'm not saying I have anybody sitting here waiting to become the CAO for the town of Kirkland Lake because I've never approached anybody in regards to that avenue. I've talked to two people and just said that, you know, this is a possibility that could come up. These people have already jobs in the municipal government and would obviously have to give up their present job and put in their name and a hat in Kirkland Lake. So, you know, I wasn't pushing them whether it's a yes or a no. I just said that whichever way we go, whether it's an internal committee or whether it's a headhunter, that once that application is out there, I would forward that off to them. And then it's up to them to decide whether they wish to see the head or not. So, you know, I've done it both ways with a headhunter. I've also done it with internal candidates. And I'm not saying that one is better than the other. I'm just saying it's, what does council want to do as your own? Because, you know, if you're sitting there as part of the committee, then you're going to have to be part of the the vetting process in regards to, you know, who are we going to interview and how are we going to bring that forward? And that all takes time.
Counselor White.
I support what Rick said. I too had listed that I'd like any applicants to be screened by Wishart. They had already warned us that there would be a very long list of candidates that we might not want right off the get-go. So I did have that on my list. I would prefer the interviews and everything to be done in-house rather than have a headhunter. I don't think we can afford that at this juncture. But I would like to see HR, CAO, and two or three members of council involved. Thanks.
Counselor Owens.
Yeah, I agree, my fellow counselors, on this one. I think it needs to be committee of council. Our CAO and our HR staff need to be involved and Wishart Law needs to be involved as well to, for the the crossing of the Ts and the dotted of the Is for, to make sure that we're going down the right direction.
Counselor Owen.
Yeah, and I just want to apologize to HR because I believe last time when I was on the committee, I don't think we had an HR person. So my apologies. Yes, HR should be involved. And Casey sort of referred to it as well. We need Wishart to also go over the contract. I'll leave it at that. Council knows what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Yeah, I think I'd have to agree, Rick, that the previous method, although there was a good group of candidates, no question with that. Putting the contract together was could have been better. We should have had more legal representation to put that together to avoid any misunderstandings or whatever the case may be. So I can live with, personally, I'm fine with what everybody is saying.
I, I have my hand up.
Up ahead, Lad, sorry.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I agree with what everyone says. And I like to see Wishart take a pivotal role, a lead role in this. They, I mean, I don't know them that well, but the time that I did get to know them, they did a very good job in cleaning up the, you know, the mess from the, the other time. So I like to see them take a pivotal role, a leading role, to make sure that we arrive at a a good candidate. But my, again, I appreciate the fact that it hasn't worked out with headhunters in the past. I do appreciate that. And that's why I'm agreeing with my colleagues. But my other question would be for Don because at last meeting, Don indicated for pivotal items that he would like to work on during his duration as an acting CEO. So I'm just, I want him to maybe comment on how these extra duties will encroach on those four, I guess, equally important items that he indicated to us at our last meeting. I mean, I'm, I'm glad to have the HR involved. I'm glad to glad to have you involved, Don, and any council, council members that will have the time. But nonetheless, I like to make sure that some of the capstone, so to speak, that you indicated to us that you'd like to accomplish during that span of time, they will, and then they would not in any way be encroached upon by this, this other role that we're asking you to partake in. Thank you.
For you, Don, how do you feel with, with the assistance of the HR supervisor and having two or three counselors involved in the process as well? Is it going to be overvolved for you?
No, so as I, somebody approached me with the same similar question two weeks ago. I can't remember which one it was, but anyways, as I mentioned last time is, no, I don't have any issues with that. I know my, you know, in my mind frame, it's the end of June is when, you know, I'm going to be wrapping things up at that point in time. But during that point in time, what I want to do is, as you'll, as you'll start to see probably in a, in a few weeks, when you start walking into the finance department here, you're going to have new people working at different desks. Over at the works department, you're going to have new people working at, at some desks over there. You're also going to be looking, I'm also going to pass a budget before the end of June so that you guys all have a budget and moving things forward. Now, my first budget aspect will come in probably in two weeks' time. I'll just come in with a capital budget at that point in time. And then four weeks after that, I'll come in with my first operating budget. And then we'll move in, move from there because I'm sure there'll be some changes and some tweaks to whatever I bring to you guys. And then on top of that process, of course, we'll, you know, I'll hire a CAO during that process or hopefully, you know, we can hire a CAO during that process. Now, those four areas that I brought to your attention under the strategic plan update is something that I'm working on constantly over the next three months in regards to continuing to move things forward. Some of these things I'll have done, some of them are going to be ongoing things that my predecessor and his or her predecessor and so on and so forth will continue to work on. So, you know, it's not something that I'm saying that I'll have those four items done when I leave here at the end of June. A couple of them I will have done, but a couple of them are essential for us to continue to move our process forward in a, in a progressive attitude. So that's where I am in regards to, to that question, Lad.
So if we're okay with that, do we have any volunteers to sit on that committee?
I, I can volunteer to sit on the committee if no one else is willing to.
Rick? Counselor White?
I can sit in. Yeah, no, whether it's two or three, four, it doesn't matter. And then there'll be myself and it'll be Cassandra from HR. Yeah.
Okay, you're in agreement with that? Fellow counselors?
Hang on.
Yeah, Counselor White, or Counselor, sorry.
Your worship. I certainly have the time, any time during the day or evening, seven days a week, to sit on that committee. And I think I, I gained a great deal of knowledge by sitting on the last committee. And I think that I could contribute to this committee. So I very much would want to sit on this committee.
So what I'll do is probably tomorrow afternoon or Thursday morning, I'll send out just an email to you guys to remind, tend to thank you. And then we'll start looking at the process, which means that, you know, we'll have to get some advertisements out and so on and so forth. And, you know, and need to, you know, I'll continue to make a couple of phone calls. And once we get that done, I'll send that out to everybody I talked to plus anybody that's responded.
Counselor Owen.
Yeah, if I can speak to one procedural manner, we cannot have more than three council representatives on that committee, otherwise it's, it's a council meeting.
I can, I can back, I would.
I just, I just didn't want us to get ourselves into trouble. I'm not, I'm not objecting to anybody sitting on the, on the committee. I just trouble without trying, so I'm just trying to avoid it here.
Could be a quorum. So we'll go with Counselor Owen, Counselor Shaba, and Counselor White.
And most people can give up a few hours during the daytime, correct?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I have this moved by Counselor Owens. So I'm just going to read out what I drafted, Counselor Owens, and let me know if you're okay with this. So I have a be resolved that report number 2021-CAO-004F entitled Recruitment of the CAO be received. That staff be directed to move forward with the recruitment of a CAO in-house utilizing the interim CAO, human resources supervisor, Counselor White, Counselor Shaba, and Counselor Owen. And that staff be directed to utilize Wishart Law to vet any selected candidate and in the preparation of the employment agreement.
Can I just ask a question before?
Can I just ask a question here?
Yes.
I know last time we talked about Wishart Noble and we also talked about using a a local lawyer as our expertise. I don't think you're here, Pat. But I approached council and council seemed to be receptive that we do use a local lawyer unless there's some extenuating circumstances why we can't use a local lawyer. And, you know, and the local lawyer that I've used in the past and has done very well, and we have used the, this local lawyer for a number of initiatives for us is what's her name, Julie Richard, Julie Richard, see, I got a pointer, Julie Richard. But if you guys want to go with, with somebody from Suce Marie, Wishart Noble, then, you know, that's fine. That's the way you're going to direct me and I have no problems in doing that. However, we all kind of agreed last two weeks ago that we would use Julie Richard unless there is some situation where Julie Richard or we didn't feel Julie could bring that expertise to the table. So I'm just throwing that out there and I'm not saying one is right and one is wrong.
Your worship, can I, may I speak?
What?
I, I don't recall that, I don't know, some of you guys can correct me, that we endorsed Julie Richard. You did bring that issue up as to the reason why you wanted to know and, and Counselor Rick Owens, Owen was the acting mayor at the time. The reason why we went all the way out to Suce Marie to have Wish, Wishart. And I'm not, I don't know the, I don't know the reason. I'm sure that you got as much out of Counselor Rick Owen regarding the reason, but I don't recall us saying that we, we, if I'm wrong, please, guys, correct me, but I don't recall us saying that we wanted to go to a particular lawyer in town that you indicated. Inasmuch as I'm in full support of shopping local, after all, I'm a local business people. But then sometimes there are a lot of things that come to me that I don't have, shall we say, a very in-depth knowledge of it. And, you know, sometimes I just defer that to other, any of my colleagues anywhere that will have adequate knowledge. So from what I've got, from what I've seen from Wishart, they've done a lot of work in municipal affairs, municipal work and whatnot. And they've, they've worked with this council. And believe me, coming in to them would not be something new territory for them. There will be no a steep learning curve for them. So I just think that there would be a very nice fit for us at this particular time. And any other legal matters, I'm sure that the staff, they do defer that to local legal businesses, rightfully so, because they can handle that. But this particular one where we need, sorry that I sent my comments late to you. But then, you know, I, I wanted to have someone that will have a vast experience in municipal politics and nuances and all of that. I, in my view anyways, I think Wishart is really best positioned to help us at this particular time. Thank you very much.
Counselor Owen.
Yeah, the reason, the reason I, I, I would like to have Wishart is simply because they're involved in recruiting CAOs, their company. And so they have knowledge that a regular lawyer would not have. And this is no knock on the local law firm. They're certainly a very good firm. But in this particular case, I think Wishart's directly involved. And they know the good apples and the bad apples that are out there. And that's not information necessarily that, that the, the local law firm would have. And that's the only reason I'm, I'm pushing for Wishart. Yes, on normal legal matters, by all means, we should do what we ask the residents to do, and that is to shop local. And I think the town has a good record at hiring local whenever we can. But in this particular case, I think Wishart could do it better and faster and maybe even less expensive because there'd be less hours billed, less billable hours. Thank you.
So are we now going to, I'm going to ask my question?
Oh.
Oh, yes, I got it. So who at Wishart were you dealing with? Like, if I go to phone Wishart and I dealt with Wishart, I want to know who are you dealing with at Wishart?
Go Stacy.
Marco DiMio will have all that information.
So who, who really, just, he said he answered that.
Yeah, so I have all their contacts that we could work together there, Paul Cassan as well as Nula Kenny. But council, just so you're aware, I learned that Nula is no longer with them, so more than likely be Paul and maybe a different replacement. But either way, I do have their contact information.
Okay, there is one other lawyer there from Kirkland Lake.
I know who it is.
Yeah, Gord Acton.
Hey, Slid, I used to work right beside Acton at Wishart Noble in the Sioux, so Ford's been there for quite a number of years. So, yeah.
He certainly foreknows you with the area, so.
Oh, yes.
Okay. So motion moved by Casey Owen, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that report number 2021-CAO-004M entitled Recruitment of the CAO be received. That staff be directed to move forward with the recruitment of a CAO in-house utilizing the interim CAO, human resources supervisor, Counselor White, Counselor Shaba, and Counselor Owen. And that staff be directed to utilize Wishart Law to vet any selected candidate and in the preparation of the employment agreement.
Comments? None noted, all in favor? Motion carried. Consideration of, no, this is a motion. None noted? Introduction and reading and consideration of bylaws.
Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second, and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and the clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed thereto. Bylaw number 21-027 being a bylaw Bylaw number 21 dash zero two seven being a bylaw to appoint a clerk and a deputy clerk for the town of Kirkland Lake.
Comments? All in favor? Motion carried?
Moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Casey Owens. Be resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second, and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and the clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed there, too. Bylaw number 21 dash zero two eight being a bylaw to stop, uh, close, and declare the laneway located south of lot six nine seven two seven zero one, Plan M one one eight T as surplus land.
All in favor? Motion carried?
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Rick Owen. Be resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second, and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and the clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed there, too. Bylaw number 21 dash zero two nine being a bylaw to authorize the execution of an encroachment agreement with two six eight nine eight six Ontario Inc. for a portion of road allowance adjacent to two government road west.
All in favor? Motion carried? Uh, questions from council, council to staff? None noted? Uh, notices of motion, item ten point one, Counselor White?
Uh, yes, so, um, I would like to introduce a motion that council direct staff to bring back a report within the next thirty days which detail the following items in preparation for Budget Process 2021. One, the total number of properties in tax and separate water payment arrears. The total number of properties without a single payment in 2020 as above. The total monetary value of non-collected taxes and water payments on said properties. How said amount is dealt with in both the budgeting process and government reporting standards? And any current policy, um, being developed for collection of delinquent accounts. So that I'll be bringing back for consideration next meeting.
Any other notices of motion? None noted? Councillors' reports?
Yep.
Councillors' reports? Uh, just one item, uh, I, I want to comment on, uh, the Federation of Northern Ontario Municipality, uh, uh, conference. It is May the eighteenth. Uh, it'll be virtual. And, uh, it, it's a one-day, six, uh, sorry, eight-thirty in the morning, till three-thirty in the afternoon and, and no costs, uh, which is nice to hear. And also, uh, the A M O conference, August fifteenth to eighteenth, uh, which will be virtual as well. Uh, we attended, did the one last year. That's not, uh, happening until August the fifteenth to the eighteenth. But I'm going to send a note out, uh, to you on an individual basis and, uh, to see if you're interested in attending so that we can, uh, budget accordingly, at least for the A M O. Who have the comments?
Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Casey Owens. Be resolved that the verbal updates from members of council be received.
All in favor? Motion carried? Uh, additional information, item twelve point one, uh, notice of public meeting, uh, for the town of Kirkland Lake zoning bylaw update.
It's just a verbal notice, uh, just to circulate once again, that next meeting, we will be having the public meeting to, uh, discuss the zoning bylaw update. But moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be resolved that the verbal notice of the town of Kirkland Lake zoning bylaw update public meeting to be held April twentieth, twenty twenty-one be received.
All in favor? Motion carried? Let's speak on item twelve point two or three?
Yep.
Okay, uh, corporate calendar amendments, uh, to make council meetings?
Well, speaking with the interim C A O, um, previously in December, the corporate calendar only had one meeting in May because of the Phenum, um, conference. But as we know that that is virtual as well as only for one day, although it is on the same day as the meeting we are proposing to add, uh, we'd like to have two meetings now in May to fall on the first and the third Tuesday so that the interim C A O can deliver the budget to you.
Okay.
Moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Be resolved that the amended twenty twenty-one corporate calendar be received.
All in favor? Motion carried? Item twelve point, uh, three, two thousand and twenty provincial offenses administration annual report.
This report was received through the clerk's office and, uh, staff, or we were directed to place it on the council agenda. So let's just care for your information.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, if I may just make a quick comment. I, I read this quickly. I didn't see anything in there about closing the court in Kirkland Lake. Although that did come up at the meeting I was at, so I, I don't know if that means they've changed their mind or I, I'm not sure what that indicates. Thank you.
No, you're not that influential, or, or Counselor Owen, so.
Oh, no, no.
I talked to, uh, I talked to both, uh, Drew, you know, up at the Northern College. He wasn't aware of the courthouse pulling out. He made a few phone calls and he said, no, the courthouse is still staying there. What they were talking about at the meeting you attended were is the Provincial Offenses Act sessions that is different than the courthouse.
Okay.
That one was being held in the, uh, in the room at Northern College. That was the one where they moved it from, uh, where down, uh, in Hillerberry from, uh, from the office over to the, uh, count hall. So Chris and a few of the staff members are going to come up to Kirkland Lake. We'll take a look at our spot here. I don't think our spot here is right what they're looking for, but it may be something that we can tweak and, uh, get them in here, you know, uh, during their session. One of the areas they're looking for is leaving some of their equipment up here so that they don't have to cart their equipment around and, uh, so on and so forth. So Chris and I will look into that. And we'll get back to, uh, council in regards to where we're going to end up with P O A. So it's not the regular courthouse, it's just P O A they're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
I can confirm basically the same thing I heard from, uh, a former kid today when I was talking to him. So thank you for that update.
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Casey Owens. Be resolved that the twenty twenty provincial offensive administration annual report be received.
All in favor? Motion carried? Motion to move into closed?
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Stacy White. Be resolved that council move into a closed session pursuant to section two thirty-nine-two to discuss one matter pertaining to a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instructions to be applied to any negotiations carried on behalf of the municipality.
All in favor? Motion carried? Hey, any discussion or matters from the closed session? Nothing noted? Confirmation bylaw?
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Rick Owen. Be resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second, and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and the clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed there, too. Bylaw number twenty-one dash zero three zero being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at a meeting held April sixth, twenty twenty-one.
All in favor? Motion carried? Motion to adjourn?
Moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Stacy White. Be resolved that council adjourn the April sixth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting of council.
All in favor? Carried.